Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community during this past week. Rule call please.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Mr. McGough?
Here. Let the record show that Mr. Gahn had previously told us that he would not be able to attend this evening's meeting.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Wexler temporary chair for the Committee on Public
Second. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have and nays have. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributor Report Comparison 2014-2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Minutes of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority Regular Board Meeting Held June 12, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held August 27, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, Minutes of the Nonuniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held August 27, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3E, Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting Held August 27, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3F, Audit Status Report from Robert Rossi and Company Received September 25, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3G, Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Held September 10, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3H, Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date to be held October 29, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3I, Controllers Report for Month Ending August 31, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3J, The Sewer Authority of the Scranton, City of Scranton Independent Auditors Report for Year Ending March 31, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3K, Agenda for the Nonuniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held September 24, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3L, Correspondence Received from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates Incorporated Regarding the 2015 Financial Requirement and Minimum Municipal Obligation.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Any clerk's notes?
No, Mr. McGough.
Anything from council? Any announcements? A couple of things, first of all, please remember that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Many people in our community have been affected and please keep them in your prayers and your thoughts. Also, reminder that beginning next week, meetings will be held at the Theater at Lackawanna College, same time. Caucus will be at 6:00, meeting will start at 6:30. Also, because of the elevator, the repairs to the elevator, offices that are, to which the public needs access, will be moved so that there is, so that they are ADA compliant. They will be moved within this building for the period that the elevator is not working. So if anybody does have business in City Hall, there is still, there will still be handicap access to those offices. Also, just a note, Scranton tomorrow, in partnership with the Penn State Extension Master Gardeners, planted, over this past weekend, planted over 550 mums in over 100 planters There were well over 40 volunteers from various organizations and all to do this. I guess what we're asking is two things that I would ask of people. First of all, if there's, for business owners downtown, if there is a planter in front of your place of business, it would be nice if, when out and watered it, you know, once in a while, just to keep it, keep it fresh and growing. The other thing is that for people frequenting the downtown, the planters aren't waste receptacles. One of the, one of the things that is really appalling to me is that people spend time trying to make, you know, to beautify the city a little bit and then other people come along and, you know, throw cigarettes, throw, you know, lunch bags, everything else into these planters. They're not waste receptacles, so please treat them appropriately. And as I said, business owners also, you know, take some pride in what's in front of your building and help out the city a little bit. And that's...
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Bill Jackwitz, South Scranton resident. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to start off by giving my condolences to the Scranton taxpayers and property owners of the City of Scranton because it sounds like they're going to get murdered and hammered, killed, whatever adjective you want to use to describe what's going to happen to them once the taxes start getting raised because it's just probably what's going to have to happen. You know, I'd like to take a little trip down memory lane. You know, we've had recovery plans in the past that failed because there was not a lot of thought put into those plans. We've had unbalanced budgets passed year after year after year. We had the Doarty Three, the three to two votes that happened for four consecutive years that basically killed the city and people knew that that was going to be, going to happen and it eventually did happen. We have audits that are late every single year. We have pay raises to the administrators and to the mayor, which the city cannot afford. We have unqualified cabinet members. Proof of that is go back and read Mayor Doarty's sworn testimony when this was all discussed and he was under oath when he answered those questions. We have lucrative retirement plans. We forced 100 city employees to retire, then we doubled their retirement and benefits and then we had to go out and hire 100 new people to replace them. We never had any serious negotiation with nonprofits. We never attempted to collect any money seriously from the nonprofits, even though we kind of did some dog and pony, but we never seriously tried to do anything. We're selling properties to nonprofits, basically for pennies, $99 leases, 99 cent leases, whatever the heck they were. And these properties once paid taxes and now they're not paying taxes. We're hiring consultants and assistants when, you know, they're not needed. But not only we hire consultants and assistants, we're giving the people who we hired to do these jobs more money and pay raises because we're hiring the best qualified and if you hire the best qualified, you have to pay them more money. We gave OECD loans to businesses who really didn't need those loans, but to top it off, they never paid us back. The attorney told us that two weeks ago, can't remember his name, he said, "The list is large. We have a larger list of people who didn't pay us back." Most of them probably didn't even need the money, but we gave it to them anyway. Now they're not paying us back. We raised the mortgage tax, we've given business out of this city. Now we're going to drive more business out of the city because taxes are going up again. But not only are we going to drive business out of the city, we're driving residents out of the city. There's more for sale signs in the City of Scranton now than ever before. I couldn't believe how many have gone up recently in my neighborhood in Southside. It's crazy. It's, it really is. I don't have an explanation for it. We raised the parking to a dollar and a quarter an hour, but yet we're going to bring more people downtown. We're going to charge them more money to park downtown, but yet we're going to bring more people downtown. We raised the rates at the parking garages. Parking garages are falling apart. That's going to bring more people downtown? I mean, it's about time that we smarten up. And the only people that have to smarten up are the seven elected officials. The mayor, five city councilmen, and a city controller. City controller who's been here for 30 years. Okay? This is the problem. It's not the court cases. It's not the computers. It's not the nonprofits. It's the people who are in charge of the city. That's why people run and hide when you mention the word Scranton, Pennsylvania, to someone to move into this area, whether it be a, whether it be a family or whether it be a business. Why? What's the one reason? Taxes. And now we're talking about raising taxes again. I mean, come on, people. There's got to be some other plans. You know, we hire people from Newark, New Jersey. Newark, New Jersey is more corrupt than Scranton, Pennsylvania is. Why don't we go out to the Midwest? Why don't we go to Ohio? Why don't we go to Wisconsin, other places where they, New Mexico, where they've actually turned things around? And they've gone from being in debt to being, to having money. Why don't we do that? And the only people that can do that are the seven elected officials. I can't do it and no one in this audience can do it. The only people that can do it are the seven elected officials of the City of Scranton and it's about time they do it. It's as simple as that. We can make all the excuses and all the alibis in the world. You know what? But it boils down to the seven elected officials of the City of Scranton.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton resident. With regard to item 3E, Rossi's audit status, there was one change on the audit. We apparently did get the Scranton Redevelopment Authority's audit done and that's been received. However, we still don't have the parking authority's audited financial statements. I did go to Mr. Washo's office this afternoon. He was not there. There was a gentleman manning the office, only one other person. I asked him what would be a good time for me to come back. He said, "Well, Mr. Washo is usually here between 3:00 and 4:00. It was 3:30. He wasn't coming in today." I asked him if he knew the status of the audit. He said, "What audit?" So that's very interesting. With regard to 3L, the correspondence from Anderson and Associates on the MMO for 2015. I don't know if you had a chance to read the backup on this yourself, but Anderson attached a letter from the Bear Barber Company that prepares the MMO. And they sent a letter to the Composite Pension Board explaining that the board has two options. One is to go with the full MMO, which would be $15.8 million. The other one is to go with Act 44 relief provisions, which would be $12.3 million. However, this is what they say. "Based on the fact that the city is at severe level of distress and has one of the lowest funding levels in the state, we recommend that the city make contributions to the plan in excess, excess of the full 2015 MMO, which is $15.8 million, before consideration of Act 44 relief." What I would like to know is what does the city intend to do and how does it intend to find the money? Has anybody got any ideas what they're going to go with the $12.3 million or the $15.8 million or excess?
That is currently being discussed because going with the lower amount with the discount may put us where we are paying out more than we're putting into the pension.
Well, you'll have to, have to look at, not only look at it...
And so it really doesn't, it doesn't provide necessarily a savings, but at the same time, paying the full MMO or in excess of the full MMO is also problematic. And yes, they are looking at options, a number of options for payment.
Well, good luck finding $12.30, let alone $12.00 million or more. And finally, item 5D, which is this contract for fire recovery services. Someone explain to me why I pay real estate and EMS taxes and other taxes. I thought that provided me with municipal services. What was I missing? Why, why this additional fee?
This is, this would recover costs incurred by the city and we would recover it from the insurance companies as opposed to paying for those services from general fund.
And for those of us who don't carry insurance because we're covered by the VA, who would pay the bill?
I'm sorry.
Those of us who are covered by the Veterans Administration, we retirees, who paid our dues to the country. We don't carry private insurance. Who would pay that bill?
This is, this is car insurance. This is car insurance.
This is, if, for example, I'll give you, and I did it at the caucus, if there were a car accident where fire company had to go out and clean up spilled fuel.
That's not what your documentation says. Let me read you your documentation. Fees to be charged, Scranton Bureau of Fire shall be reimbursed a fee which in the event of a motor vehicle accident shall be a per-vehicle fee or per pedestrian or per bicyclist. For example, basic emergency service assistance, $250. Prohibited defenses, it shall not be a defense to any action to collect these fees that a person was not at fault. In other words, I could be walking down the street, I'm going to continue. I would be walking down the street, hit by a hit-and-run driver drunk, okay? Fire department comes out and they're going to charge me $250 because it doesn't matter whether I'm at fault or not. Okay? It goes on. "It shall not be a defense to any action to collect these fees if the person has no insurance coverage." Well, I'm sorry, I paid my dues. As far as I'm concerned, I'm covered by the VA and I will not pay any fee. It goes on. It gets even worse.
Mrs. Hoda-Wanitz, we understand what the legislation is.
Well, I'm just saying to you, this isn't right. Are you going to repeal the EMS tax? Seems to me to be redundant. Or maybe we could charge it to the commuters. I'm sure they'll be happy to pay. They'll love this when they see this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Schmansky and I'm here on behalf of Scranton Reads. And Scranton Reads is a community reading event that is organized by the City of Scranton and the Aubrey Memorial Library. Every year during the month of October, citizens of Scranton come together to read a great work of literature. They participate in book discussions, special events related to the chosen work of that year. At Scranton Reads, we have two main goals. The first is to encourage the community to read and the second is to bring the community together through the shared common experience. So at Scranton Reads, we like to enhance the feeling of community by bringing people from all different backgrounds together. This year, the book that we have selected is The Works of Edgar Allan Poe and Brian has a copy of the book for everybody.
We always appreciate gifts.
And in the book is also a listing of all the events that we have around the Scranton area for the month of October. And this is our 13th year doing it, so we really hope to see you at some of our events that are coming up. Thank you very much.
I know in the past, council has made attempts to, you know, be participants in the Scranton Reads and, you know, it is a very enjoyable activity that you, that you plan. And I've also talked to Mr. Finerty...
Yes.
And made a suggestion for a book for next year.
Oh, okay.
Which is a book written by a Scranton resident about the City of Scranton.
Oh, that would be great. Yeah. Sounds good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Good evening, Doug Miller, Scranton. Just to begin here, I, listening to Mr. Jackwitz this evening and I think the beginning of his presentation pretty much summed everything up quite accurately. Get ready for a bloodbath, Scranton. With the result we received a few days ago by the court, I could say welcome to paradise and thank you, Scranton voters. You've done a remarkable job, election after election, and I can say that we must add some pretty darn beautiful-looking yard signs out there last election. So thank you. You've done a remarkable job. You know, it's just, it's beyond the point of frustration at this point where we take a look at where we are at this time, at this stage of the game. Quite frankly, there are no answers in this government. It's been that case for decades. When we think we're going somewhere, we continue to kick the same can down the road and we expect a different result. And I know it sounds quite repetitive, but that's exactly the case when you're in a city where you're constantly banging your head against the same wall and expecting to move forward. And that's what we've consistently done, gentlemen. There's not one creative idea that I've heard come out of this chamber since January. We've heard all the silly little fictitious plans. We had a transplant from New Jersey come in, who has a record of mismanagement himself, come in from New Jersey to tell us things we already knew, who made ridiculous recommendations. Prime example is the Act 205 tax that was shot down. Last week, we heard from a council member who claimed that their opinion can be wrong but never be false. I don't know what the difference is between the two, but evidently the court found that opinion to be false. So where do we go now, gentlemen? What's our brilliant plan now? Are we going to bring Mr. Amoroso back to the table, the drawing board? Are we going to sell some parking garages now, sell off the sewer authority, maybe even sell City Hall? Why not at this point? Have we, have we taken a chance to actually review this document, the 2014 operating budget? Has anybody taken the time to review this document? Mr. Rogan and Mr. McGough should be familiar with it. Have you, Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Evans? And what do you think of it?
It's what we're working to.
Are we willing to make some serious cuts moving forward? Because if we're not, we're wasting our time. I've already sat down and I've reviewed the budget and I'm working on cuts. All I hear out of this chamber is more taxation, more sucking the life out of the residents of this city. We wanted to burden the people outside of the city and obviously you were held accountable on that. So now what are you going to do? We going to raise taxes 50% again and force more people out of their homes? Forget about selling your home. We have people just fleeing this city altogether on a daily basis. And what are we doing? We're just standing on the sidelines watching it happen. I am so sick and tired of hearing the excuse, "Well, give us a chance. We were just elected." You've had a chance. You've lived in this city for the majority of your lives. You've lived the everyday life. You understand the struggles this city faces. You all campaigned. You all walked around this city, I would assume. You went through the neighborhoods. You saw the blight. You saw the for sale signs. You saw the poverty all throughout this city. You chose to be put in that seat. The residents elected you. Did qualifications matter? We could debate that. But at the end of the day, it's over with. You were elected and we have to work with what we have. Is it scary? You're sure in heck right it is. But this is what we have. And now you have the keys of the future and we're at a critical stage here. Do we want to go bankrupt? No, we don't. But is that where we're at right now? It most certainly is. Because I haven't heard one realistic plan. We're talking about taxing people in this city once again, yet have we taken the time to look at delinquent taxes and what's currently on? And so that before we go outside of the city and punish people, maybe we should clean our own house out. You know, I just really, it's just, it's disturbing and it's hard to have any optimism for the future as I look around here because I just hear one silly plan after another. None of it's realistic. You know, Mr. McGough stated in the paper today that we might be, we might luck out the third time trying to commuter tax. Maybe it's time to get that idea out of our minds because it's, it's an absurdity. I wish I was as delusional as Mr. McGough was with the statement that bankruptcy is at the end of the road. I still feel we're on the road. Well, maybe you're on, I don't know what road you're on, Mr. McGough. Maybe it's the Yellow Brick Road or the land of Oz, but I, you know, I like to be on the same, your, the road you're on, but evidently you're not seeing the same thing we are. And unless we're not willing to step up and get our acts together and make some tough decisions, this city isn't going anywhere. And bankruptcy is the only solution.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And maybe we don't have a loud enough bell. You know, I think... ... light system or something a little more respectful.
Maybe you should abide by the five minutes.
Well, maybe you should look at something that's more respectful.
Maybe you should abide by the rules of counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You're welcome, Mr. McGough. You're welcome.
Good evening, council. You know, I'd like to start off by saying, you know, I still have respect for anybody who's elected to public office. I won't deny that I am extremely disappointed where we are and how long we've been on this road to where we are now. I think it's time for a new plan. I brought up the 30% tax cuts. Cut the budget by 30%. That's what I talked about. You know, I think we've got to stop showboating. And I, you know, I'll straighten that. We went through the Hill section, we put up a condemned sign. I think Mr. Evans went there. You know, Mr. Evans, I'd like to ask if you go to the Hill again, knock on doors on private residences that are in disrepair and leave them a note and tell them to bring their property up to some kind of standards because, you know, either the roof is bad, the porches are falling off. You know, because to be honest with you, we've blamed all the wrong people for the problems we've had in our city for a long time. A 30% cut in the budget is only a beginning and we can laugh about it and we can find everything to be humorous, but you know, I know people that make $70,000, $80,000 a year, they're walking out of their house. They're leaving it here. They're leaving it here. They'd sell it to anybody that could pay what they owed the bank. And I've talked to these people. You know, it's nice to dress up and wear pretty little suits and pretend like you have some answers. And that's not a disrespectful remark. You know, I think we've picked leadership within this country, and we've used the wrong barometer to determine leadership ability. And that's why our country's been in decline since I've been a child. Look, we can bomb countries into the Stone Age, but don't forget, we bombed Vietnam into the Stone Age, and in the war, we pulled out of there. And you see what happened there. We destabilized the whole Middle East, and now we're worried about ISIS cutting people's heads off and fighting them with our equipment. So, I mean, you know, it's time to be really realistic and understand where Scranton is. It's time to move away from Act 47 and sever that relationship. It hasn't led us anywhere. It's been a dead end. We can make the decisions we have to make here. And I've said it before, SAP is the beginning of a new way back for this city. The other way back is to move away from Act 47. Look, if we can blame Mayor Doherty for all our problems, he didn't create them. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania told him what to do, and he did it. The project money that came in here from the state, the grant money that's been misspent, everybody knew it was being misspent. That wasn't a secret to all the people in the halls of power here. Just the people on the street have finally figured it out, because they can't live here anymore. They can't pay the amount of taxes they're paying. And, you know, I just think that the residents in this city, when this next budget comes out, if there isn't a 30% cut in the budget, they have to ask this council and this mayor to resign. We need to find leadership. This city has to go into receivership or bankruptcy if the people we elect can't make the tough choices. And to be honest with you, ordinary people have no more money. That's why it was so, the questions I asked at that time and did the right to know for, they're tied up. They don't want to give me the answers, and that's fine. Because I'm going to sit down with Mrs. Craig probably tomorrow and try to work through this. But, you know, these are the questions the council members should have asked. Because it was so important for you to know the people you're representing. Because they're counting on you. They're not counting on me. They're not counting on the people sitting here tonight. They're counting on you. And after two decades, under Act 47, and a city more troubled now than it was then, there's a real problem here. And, you know, I don't know if you asked your solicitor about 205 when you decided to go forward in court, because he should advise you that it wasn't going to go anywhere. So I think you received some very faulty information. And like I've said before, while the judge disagrees with you, Mr. McGough respectfully, and he's the one who has to say here, not you. What you say doesn't mean a thing to the judge or the Commonwealth, because it's just a moot point. With all respect to you. But you know something? The people in this city, they're not going to stay here. They're going to leave. They're tired of the corruption here. They're tired of the inside track to everything that goes on here. They're tired. How can you give grant money to people and just forget about the neighborhoods? I think the most important thing the council could do is go walk through the neighborhoods and knock on their door, tell them to bring their properties up to code, tell them to fix their porches. I mean, we've played the landlord game now. Let's play the other game. And let's get people who come down here and say, "You guys are out of your mind." I mean, it's really time for the residents of this city to ask the mayor and the council to resign. If they can't find a solution, because taxing people outside the city, that's not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ozzy Quinn.
Ozzy Quinn, President of Hill Neighborhood Association. Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask the city council to revive the vacant property review committee. Last week, the Hill Neighborhood Association had its monthly meeting, and we had 52 people at the meeting. And they were unanimous, these people, of trying to do something, you know, to bring back the Hill neighborhood. You know, when you bring 52 people out, these people are still interested in what's going on in their neighborhood. Now, what does that mean? I know there are a lot of vacant lots in the Hill neighborhood, okay? In the Hill section that are not being used because they're unutilized, because of the fact, you know, these are small lots, small dimensions, like 50 by 80, 40 by 85, 27 by 60, and so on and so on. And all these lots were up for tax sale. They went to the judiciary sale, the upset sale, the judiciary sale. And now they lay in the repository in the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau. Now, we at the Hill were unanimous last week that we want to do something about these lots. We want to try to, well, we have different ideas, maybe some off-street parking, maybe some gardening, maybe get Marywood College School of Architecture involved, you know? Things like that. We want to bring back the neighborhood, okay? And these lots will never be sold, because people just don't want them. And you can't divide them up and give one half to the other, because people don't want their taxes raised, you know? And if you take on title, you have to do title searches, and then you're going to have to pay for the what's in it, for the taxes. So what I'm asking is that you take it seriously and don't drag your feet and revive the vacant property review committee. I say that respectfully, so that we could possibly start to continue, and I start to continue to revitalize the Hill section. And that would be a big step. And that, and what Mr. Evans is trying to do in regards to the quality of life ordinance, and hopefully, we can bring back a neighborhood, okay? When those 52 people turn out, they turn out because they're interested in the neighborhood. They don't turn out, you know, to talk about taxes or to talk about anything else. They just talk about what we can do for the neighborhood. So I beg you, you know, to please consider this. Talk amongst yourselves and try to get that vacant property review committee back on its feet, and so they can get these properties back and sell them to us for a dollar. You won't be sorry. It's better for them than waiting until the summer comes and the winter comes, and you have to maintain these properties, and nobody maintains them. And all it does is cause more blight. And, you know, we can rectify that situation, and we want to rectify it. So I'd appreciate if you would consider our proposal I offer you tonight, and I hope that you follow through with it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Quinn, I just wanted to say that that's a very good idea, not only for the Hill, but for the rest of the city as well. That, you know, other neighborhoods are in need of that type of activity. So thank you for your suggestion.
You're welcome.
My comment on that, too, would be, and Ozzy knows this very well, I've been an advocate of the vacant blight review committee being reinstituted for years. It's a very underutilized tool that the city has, and by doing that, they can get these properties into the hands of the SRA, and then turn them over to organizations like the Hill Neighborhood Association. And then they could do what Ozzy's talking about. They can put gardens there. They can sell them to adjoining neighbors. They could put a garage there, whatever is the best use for that property, and get them cleaned up and get them back on the tax rolls. So I applaud you, Oz, for that idea. You have my full support. I'm sure the rest of the council feels the same way. And the Hill could be very much a blueprint for what could happen in the other neighborhoods that would get this thing off the ground. So thanks.
Ryan Elman.
Hello, my friends, ex-friends, soon-to-be ex-friends, whatever. I only got a couple of things. One of them, it's dead and done. I've heard a couple of people just hope we don't go out like Doherty with all these losing lawsuits that just make the lawyers rich. The Amosha Plan is a complete failure. It's time to go on to Plan B, whatever that is. An intelligent being would have done so many things positive to try to help people in this city. I think he could have went down personally and talked to Dean Hessler and tried to keep them from moving in several other big companies. Like the medical people moved to Troop or Justice or something. It's always easy to say raise taxes and sell things. It takes some intelligent being to try to save this city. He's an outsider that doesn't know nothing about this city. I bet he doesn't know where the Tripp House is or anything. He doesn't know the people. I bet he's never talked to someone from right across the street that's lost their home because they couldn't afford it no more. Just not taxes, just everything about it. You know, I think we got a good mayor. He's just getting very poor advice, very poor, the worst advice humanly possible. I don't know where they dug up this guy. He's like a charlatan around here. I'm not going to go on with this. It's just, you know, I talk to people. They just give up on the city. There's just so much apathy here. It's sad. Nobody wants to vote. Nobody cares about who's sitting up there anymore. They don't care who gets the seats for the state government, the governor. I never heard, nobody seems to care about anything. It's like a bunch of beaten people. Well, as you know, I live on North Main. My neighborhood's gone downhill so bad. I think if somebody would give the licensing bureau some teeth, some enforcement, they can't enforce codes that are on the books. They can't go into people's houses that are rebuilding them without building permits. This is senseless. They're supposed to do things like that. That's what keeps these people from Brooklyn, New York, from buying 10 houses and letting them go to pot. I got one of these guys across the street, and he got 125 houses he brags about. You know, no one can take care of 125 pieces of property. He doesn't care who lives there. He doesn't care what goes on, as long as he gets his rent. I got quads running up and down the sidewalk. They should be prohibited from riding down the street to get gasoline. They're unlicensed, they're uninsured, they're uninspected. I don't have no curbs. You can't walk on the sidewalks anyway, because cars are parked there. Because people have, they rent an apartment with no parking whatsoever on the 2500 block. So they park on the sidewalk. Nothing's done about it. In the morning, it's 7 o'clock, the kids are in the street, walking around illegal cars. It's the same thing for years, years. Every Monday and Tuesday, there's signs all over the street from yard sales that people don't take down. They ought to be, send them a citation or something for crying out loud. This is just, the neighborhoods just don't look nice no more, you know? What am I paying taxes for? I can't walk on a sidewalk. I don't have no curbs, so the water goes over my yard. I keep putting stones in my driveway. They keep washing away. That block grant money, HUD gives it to developers instead of letting the city have it to work on projects. That, of all things, they keep making cuts in the sidewalk where they got them. You know, if they were no good, they shouldn't have been paid for to start with. There's just mismanagement at every turn. You people don't think about the Doug Millers that are going to be here 10 or 20 or 30 years. What kind of cities they going to get? It's terrible. I think it's time to start thinking about receivership or something, to try to quit throwing good money after bad, because we have hit them. You people, we just travel in different circles.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
You people just talk to people in your financial group and social circles and friends. You don't know what's going on down on Luzerne Street and...
Mr. Elman, thank you.
Jackson Street and so... You stop me, I'm going to poke pins in your dial tonight.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you for allowing me to talk, Mr. McGough. I won't poke no pins in there. I'll wait for the right time.
Somebody's been poking them. I don't know who, but... Is there anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, council. Marie Schumacher. I'm going to get on the receiver bandwagon in a minute, but a couple of items first. Today's paper talked about the SRA audit being completed. Did anybody, has anybody ever gone to the authorities and asked them to go to a fiscal year accounting system so that we can get our audit on time? Has anybody ever asked them that? I mean, I don't think you can...
I haven't. I don't know if anyone else in the past has.
Well, I think that should be investigated. So if everybody's fiscal year ended in December, we might have a chance of getting an audit on time. Next, Agenda Item 5D. I just read the backup, and at first I thought it was just Rescue One. And I don't know who dispatches Rescue One or under what circumstances, but if during motion somebody knows that, I would like to know that. But it also seems to apply just even to a fire at my home, and I do believe that is covered by my property taxes. The parking meter, Mr. Evans, if you could give us a report maybe next week on the parking meter revenue through the end of September this year compared to last year?
I know we talked about that on Monday.
Yeah.
I'll get that for you.
Yeah. And then another thing on the Scranton parking, whoops, wait a minute. Does anybody have any feeling for whether or not the legislation reforming Act 47 will be passed this legislative session? Nope? Okay.
That's not something that we have any control of.
Well, I would, no, but I would think you've talked to the legislators, and they would have...
Well, we have, but it's...
Pretty good idea. Okay. The Scranton Parking Authority had a meeting, I believe it was the 22nd of September, and they had one previously on the 2nd of October, or, excuse me, the 2nd of September. Do you get reports from them on what they've done? Joan attended the meeting, that last one, and said there was some kind of a bond passed. I would like more information on that, but there is no Parking Authority contact. So maybe you guys could find out what they actually did on the 22nd of September? That would be nice. Somebody?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I'll, and then finally, I want to hop on the receivership bandwagon. Every time it's brought up, different people say, you know, "That's terrible. It would be the worst thing for the property owners." Well, I went back and I looked up what has happened to the property taxes in the city of Harrisburg. The taxes did not change from 2009, 2010, 2011. They were the same. They filed receivership in October of, or bankruptcy, actually, and got the receivership on October 12th of 2011. The following year, their taxes went up 7.9% for the improvements and 8% for the land. They remain the same as of 2014. So tell me what a bad deal that is. What is receivership? I think that's something that's just been used as a cover. If somebody can explain during motions how we taxpayers are going to get harmed by going into receivership. I know you've all, at least those I've provided, some once, some twice. The article that David Unkovich, who was the first receiver for the city of Harrisburg, wrote, "I think that you should have either, you should consult with him. You should spend some of your reserve money on meeting with him or possibly hiring him before you continue down this path and start selling assets off or making deals one at a time instead of doing it as a package." And also, back when Gary Lewis was in town, he brought a gentleman... And also, back when Gary Lewis was in town, he brought a gentleman who came all the way up, I believe, from someplace in New Jersey. His, I did get his card. It was Nicholas, and I'm probably going to do a really bad job on this. Stromtros, S.T.R.O.U.M.T.R.O.S. He is a mediator and he's a retired Superior Court Judge of, in New Jersey. He offered to come in and talk to counsel. I think you should call him. I have his card if you need contact information and see what you can do. Both of those people, I think you need to talk to before we go any further. And I think receivership is possibly the answer.
Andy Spraglia, this is of Scranton, fellow Scrantonians. Well, another plank in our plan for recovery has fallen through and broken. But what really bothered me is when the judge asked, "Have you met with the unions?" And he said, "Yeah, last week." Now, you've been in there for nine months. That mayor has been in there for nine months. And last week, he decided to meet with the unions. That doesn't work.
Mr. Bolzoni was answering on behalf of himself.
Oh, let's have a-
That was what the attorney asked.
I know, but the mayor has met with the unions, I presume. I assume, but it doesn't pay to assume anything in this city. This city has been going down a path to destruction. You people are not Moses. You're not going to get water from a stone, but yet you keep trying. It's going to rain. They called for Thursday. I mean, in a couple of days, they expect a good rainstorm. But there's no pot of gold at the end of that rainbow. You's got to look, well, we've been saying this for how many years now and nothing has been done? It's obvious that we can't run a city because you keep giving everything out to contractors. But the party exists for two things, contractors and patronage. And that's the part that you people follow. There's no reason why we couldn't do a lot of this stuff that you're giving contracts out in-house. What do we have a Treasury Department for? To sit there, there and collect fines from somebody at a meter? Is that what we got? The Treasury Department should be doing a lot of this work you're giving contracts out for. There's no reason why they couldn't, there is no reason why we couldn't do our own parking meters. One joke after another joke after another joke, you people do. Either disband the Treasury or make them do what they're there for. They're there to collect fines. Or transfer it over to Scranton, your tax office. We lost a lot when they took away the wage tax. Now they only do real estate. Why are we going outside the area when we could be using them? And get higher, some of the people back they laid off. In-house is the best way to do anything because then you got your finger on it. You can't do what you're doing. You're giving everything to someone else to do. And then you wonder why it isn't being done. Because you have no control over them. They got their contract like this one you're going to give for three, four years, I guess, when Billy gets out of office, I guess. But you got to remember, people are looking at this and they're saying, "We blame Mayor Doherty for the same thing." 10 years ago, we brought this up. Do the things in-house, but we contracted everything out. And what happened? Where are we now? People are saying it's time to do something. Either break up the city, maybe get part to Taylor, maybe part to Dixon City, maybe that's the solution. Because the city is too complex for the people that are in office to run. It's a shame to say so, but that's what it looks like. And everybody is looking at it the same way. Scranton, we used to do everything in Scranton. I remember when the policemen walked around and gave out tickets. But now, no. We got a lot of policemen. We got a lot of people on retirement. But they're not giving out tickets. We got someone else giving out tickets. We got someone else doing this, someone else doing that. But we don't have Scrantonians doing it. We got outside companies doing it. And believe me, we haven't come out very good with these deals. It's a shame to say. But we've been saying for 10 years and it fell on deaf ears. Now they're talking about where we are. I believe, you have to truth, the blame belongs with the administration of the city. There's no question about that. If you want to blame somebody for where we are, you got to blame them. But they're not truly looking at things though. You can't blame everything on them. The federal government did a lot of damage to the city of Scranton. Anybody that remembers the garment industry knows that. And that was one of the stones that we came across in our way. Well, you got the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Spraglia.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, taxes and fees paid. First of all, about two years ago, it was mentioned that a fire truck was on loan through. And personally, I think if these people want to be so chintzy with us, we should have that fire truck back and auction it off if we need money that bad. It's getting ridiculous. They don't even pay taxes up there thanks to the landfill that Ma Schumacher can smell five miles away up on East Mountain. Now, on the sewer authority, once again. In Detroit, they have a water authority, Detroit Water Authority. Now, they ran a lot of pipelines out to more posh communities and so forth, and it's in all kinds of debt. And if you owe about $150 or $200 to the water authority, your water gets shut off, making your house condemnable immediately. Well, the golf course out there owes $500,000, but their water isn't shut off. And the sports arena owes, some sports arena owes close to 100 grand. Their water isn't shut off. So it's something to think about when you start thinking about handing it out to a private corporation. Now, last week I mentioned on taxes, I gave you some sheets and that very possibly $900 million plus was being pilfered from sales taxes from restaurants alone. Now, I'd like to go over the tax. Now, I added in, let's say things really got bad and we had to have that commuter tax and we had to tax the residents. So we got .75 for that, 3.40 Scranton school, 3.15 state, 1.35 state under Act 76, and the 47 is revised. And your near minimum wage, that's another 1%. So before you walk out with your paycheck, compliments of being a resident of this area in Pennsylvania, you'll pay about 9.65% taxes out of your check before you ever see it. And oh, by the way, I also pointed out last week that certain employers are being allowed to, and they're not even foreign companies, to pocket the taxes, the state taxes, income tax that are deducted out of paychecks of their employees, but no obligation to disclose that to them. So a nice deal if you can get it. As far as the chamber is concerned, I didn't vote for any of them, probably never would. I didn't vote for Mr. Amaroso, and if we're going to adopt his plan, let's take a vote on that too. That's a recovery plan. We voted on the last one. Let's vote on this one. And the terrible result of this turned, court ruling, is that we have 33% and it's not being gotten out there. 33% tax exempt. Some of them are courthouses, prisons, some of them are just churches or schools or whatever. But the point being, we have a land grab here for tax exempt property. Everybody just seems to be piling on, looking for more tax exempt. Luzern Community College is looking for land up here. It just goes on and on. And I'd also, if anybody knows, you could state it right now, what would be the total collectible property tax for the year 2014? Assuming that everybody paid every dime and they were assessed. Does anybody know?
Not offhand.
Because I suspect it would be, wasn't it like over 20 million the last years? And then we raised this property tax, so we might be losing like 8, $10 million a year on this exempt deal. And that would definitely go a long way to solve our problems. And also, we have to collect the trash fees and back trash fees. It's gone far enough. There's too many wealthy people that aren't paying their fee. If somebody's broke, put a lien against their house. And people of Scranton, you've got Fergusonitis. 65% African Americans, and they have an all-white council, an all-white mayor, an all-white police force, and you're complaining. And it was very sad when that kid was shot, but we're not voting either. And it's certainly not voting in form, so get off your ditty box and vote. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address counsel?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler?
Thank you, Mr. McGough. This week's decision by Judge Braxton was a surprise to us. The way that the opinion was written, his findings that the law was silent on whether the tax had to be put on residents as well as non-residents was not as clear to me as it was to him. The judge could have decided on this case either way, but in the reality, he did not do that. So now we have to look and wait for the state legislature to come up with their plan on how this tax will be handled. Hopefully now, we're waiting for them to pass it so we know if the LST tax is going to be raised and what changes may be made to the Act 205. There are several different options that are under consideration, and we are in communication with the administration, and we're working and evaluating what those steps may be. We have to go forward with this. I am happy with the fact that I voted for the Act 205. It was a tool that was presented to us for the city. We have to take advantage of everything that is available for us to help balance us, our budget, and get us out of this financial crisis. This week, I attended a meeting with the members of Veterans Post 341 in regard to the Duffy statue and flagpole in Duffy Park in South Scranton. Meeting with the gentlemen from that association, I found that they are dedicated citizens, very proud of their American heritage, very proud of their service to the country, very proud to be Southsiders. Based upon some conversations we had with Solicitor Shrive, it appears right now that the Duffy statue will remain in Southside and will be part of the new Duffy Park. So we are working on arrangements to make that happen. The Post has had their Memorial Day celebration at that park since 1939. And they've been committed, their association is strong, their association is growing, and I look forward to working with them in the future and continuing their service. In regards to Item 5D and the insurance recoupment, this is something that has been kicked around in the city of Scranton for as many years as I've been involved in politics. There is an expense to the city when our crews are sent out to different type of accidents. For an example, last week, when the truck went over the barrier on the Scranton Expressway, our trucks were forced to go out there and we're there for three hours with cleanup, spill removal, and all that type of thing. These are the type of things that we're, that other cities do across the country, and it's time for us to get on board and take use of these programs. The goal is to have these things paid by insurance companies. The fee that the company will charge us will be 15% of what they collect, and I think it's a win for our city to help us offset some of our costs. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. McGough.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, thank you. I will also talk about the 205 commuter tax a little bit first. And I think Councilman McGough spelled out what the city's options are very well in the newspaper today. Obviously, I'm disappointed in the judge's decision regarding the 205 tax. I personally believe it's judicial activism. That provision currently isn't in the law because one of the big arguments during the time when this was being adopted was whether the state would include an equal protection provision in that law. And that's what we're waiting on now. We're waiting to see what the state's going to do, whether they will require it to be levied equally on city residents and commuters. But the city does have many options in regards to levying a commuter tax, which I think needs to be done because the residents of the city, especially the senior citizens of our city, can't afford more property tax increases. With a third of the city's land nonprofit, where we're not bringing in any property tax revenue, the burden falls on those who own homes. And I think it was striking to see throughout this court case, the vast majority of those who were suing, were challenging this, worked for nonprofits or government. And that's where part of the problem, that the city, so much of the city's land is taken by nonprofit and government, we aren't receiving tax revenue. Some of the options that were brought up is an appeal of the two, of the ruling, if the state chooses not to enact that equal protection provision. Another option, which I believe is a very strong one at this point, is to revisit the Act 47 commuter tax. If you recall, two years ago, I mean, actually, at this point in time, I opposed a commuter tax. Between now and then, because of the changes in the city's financial situation, you know, caused me to change my mind on this issue. But two years ago, when the previous administration went to court, there were two main reasons why we were shot down. Number one was the previous administration didn't have their facts and figures correct when they were in front of Judge Nealon. And number two was in that decision, the judge stated that because the city has the power to raise taxes and raise fees, that should be the first option. That has happened. Property taxes in the city of Scranton have gone up over 80%. The garbage fee has almost doubled. Rental registration fees have tripled. Fees for dog licenses have increased. Everything that could have been increased on the city taxpayers unfortunately has been. And now it's time that we have to look for those who work in the city to pay their fair share as well. A third option that I also believe should be explored, that was mentioned by the previous counsel, was a change in the city's classification due to the fact the city's population has decreased. I think that needs to be looked into as well. I am looking forward to continuing to work with my colleagues on this board and the mayor as well to do anything we can to try to get a commuter tax enacted because it is a very important plank in the mayor's recovery plan. And the burden can't be shouldered only by the property owner. That's been the unfortunate answer to the city's ills for decades. And the homeowner can't continue to pay increased real estate taxes, not only from the city, but at the same time, while the school district and the county are having dramatic increases at the same time. Two other items regarding the legislation for the fire department. This is, and I know it was explained, but this is only for motor vehicle accidents. It is only for motor vehicle accidents as I read it. If there's something I'm missing, you know, be happy to look through it again. And as Councilman Wexler mentioned, it's to offset some of the cost from the insurance companies. And in the state of Pennsylvania, it's mandatory if you're driving to have homeowner, or vehicle insurance. So that is something, and I spoke to Chief DeSarno about it a little bit today. He reached out to other chiefs in similar sized cities and said that some cities are bringing in $60,000, $70,000 a year through this. And that money is earmarked, and the city's case will be specifically earmarked for the fire department only. case, will be specifically earmarked for the fire department only. The same way the police department has money through their revenue streams earmarked specifically for that department. So we will continue to look into it. As of now, I do support this legislation, but I will continue to look at it further. And finally, it was brought to my attention, and I noticed it on my way to work, somebody cleaned all the weeds and overgrowth off the Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. It looks great. And a big thank you to whoever took time out of their day to hand pull all of those weeds. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, I want to give a status update on the quality of life ordinance. Scheduling issues did not allow myself and Pat Hitten to meet with Hazelton officials this week. However, we are now meeting with the mayor of Hazelton and his staff on Monday, October 6th. Councilman Rogan also indicated he may be available and will attend the meeting. So we're looking forward to their input on this very important piece of legislation, and based on our findings after that meeting, we hope to fast track this through the law department and then to city council. I did discuss meeting with the nonprofits with business administrator David Bolzoni. He was happy to have someone from city council engaged in this important task, and he will contact me when these meetings are scheduled. Of course, I will certainly report to council any progress along that front. Act 205. To stay the course with the Amarosa plan, we needed to move forward with this, and we did. But if the ruling is not appealed and it stands as is, then Act 205 becomes a non-starter for me. To think for a minute that Scranton residents can afford more in a wage tax increase, or more of a wage tax increase, would be insane. We are well beyond the point of diminishing returns when it comes to many of our taxes. History has shown that increases in these types of taxes on city residents while creating additional revenue in the short term actually creates less revenue in the long term, as more and more of our middle class flees the city because of these tax policies. So now what are our options? Well, I have informed an opinion on the following items, but these are some of the things that need to be debated. The Act 47 revisions that are currently at the state level would allow for a tripling of the LST tax. It is estimated that this would generate approximately $3.2 million annually. It could bring increased flexibility because the revenue from this tax can go into the general fund and not necessarily be dedicated to the pensions while Scranton is still under Act 47. The Act 47 revision also includes provisions for a payroll tax, which initially would be revenue neutral because it's based on the current revenue received through the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax. However, if enacted, those two nuisance taxes are then eliminated. Also, as wages and employees grow, this revenue stream can also grow. It also captures additional employers, including nonprofits. Finally, a commuter tax per Act 47. Ironically, if this was instituted, the rate on commuters could be as high as 1% versus the 0.75% that would have been enacted under Act 205. At this point, I'm not advocating for a commuter tax, but simply putting it on the table as we all have for discussion. And finally, my favorite subject, pension reform, is no longer just an option. Pension reform is now mandatory, if the current pension plan, and for that matter, if the city is to survive financially. And of course, a 401K-type plan for all new hires must be part of that reform. Again, we have to look long-term. We can no longer look short-term. On a positive note, Councilman Rogan reminded me of this. I go on a daily walk up and down Park, and there's two gentlemen that go to the park every day, almost every day, I see them. And one has a bag, and one has one of those long tools that you can grab trash. And every day they walk around the park and pick up trash, put it in the bag, and go home. So they're getting their exercise and they're cleaning the park at the same time. So they're a great example, you know, I don't know who they are, what their names are, one of these days I'm going to stop and ask them, but that's the kind of Scranton that we're all proud of. Thanks.
Thank you. For the past couple of weeks, we've been arguing over opinions, and, you know, when I taught school, I used to use, with the students, I used to tell them that opinions are like noses. Everybody has one and they all smell. Opinions have validity or not, or no validity. It's not a right and wrong idea. In my opinion, the Philadelphia Phillies are the best team in baseball. Well, it's, yeah. Is it an opinion? Yes. Is there validity to it? Well, not much. But it's an opinion that I may have. So it's not right or wrong, but it certainly doesn't have much validity. And so when we start talking about opinions, it's, just because you have one, it doesn't make it valid. And, you know, if you can offer some validity to opinions, then maybe people listen. As we sit here, this is not a time to be assessing blame for things. I think we're beyond blame. This is a time when we need to seek answers. And the problem that we face in seeking the answers to our problems is that there are numerous stakeholders in the welfare of this city. Residents, non-residents, unionized employees, property owners, business owners, elderly, you know, retirees, whatever it is, we are all involved in the welfare of the city of Scranton. And it seems as though, whatever steps we take, there is going to be sacrifice on someone's part. I think that we all become very personal when this happens. You know, it's kind of like, well, you know, fix the problem, but don't touch anything that's mine. You know, take care of your issues, just don't affect me. And it just doesn't happen that way. And the city is working toward some resolution to the problem, and to all of our problems. I've been involved in numerous meetings over the past months. Some of the things that, you know, that are ongoing, the SPA debt and parking monetization, pension funds, the super funding of the pension, you know, pension reform, trying to get 2015 tan, a comprehensive street paving program, capital expenses for fire trucks, packmasters, a street lighting assessment, healthcare containment, grant opportunities for parks and other things, and yes, even pilot negotiations. There have been talks. These are just some of the things that are being worked on. Because they haven't been completed, it doesn't mean that we're not addressing the problem. And as we move towards the budget, it's hopeful that some of these things can be resolved. It's a difficult process. It's not something that we're sitting back and just waiting to, you know, for somebody to come up with a miracle cure. There is daily work toward resolution of these problems. And I do take some offense at what was in the newspaper, in editorials, and in one particular column, that kind of indicated that the city wasn't doing anything to address its problems. We are. Was the Act 205 decision a setback? Yes, as I said in the paper, I think it's a mild setback. But we do have options, and we are moving forward, and we are going to address the problems that we have. That is what we were elected to do, address the problems, and to help in the operation of the city. We will continue to do that. And we welcome any ideas that people have for helping us resolve these problems, even if it is from outside of the city. We don't have all of the answers. We sometimes need help, and we will continue to seek that help wherever it comes from. And that's all.
Excuse me? 5B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled Liquid Fuels for the receipt and disbursement of those funds received for this purpose.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and resolution, accepting a donation of $5,000 from Geisinger Health System, presented to the city of Scranton to cover the cost of fireworks at Naught Park.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Pennsylvania Fire Recovery Services LLC to provide a fire department services collection reimbursement program for the city of Scranton for the period from September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, as I read through the backup to this, there may be a little bit of confusion, as it does say motor vehicle accidents, but then it also uses the word pedestrian and bicyclist. So we will seek some clarification on that, and if it needs to be reworded, we will amend All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 48, 2014, and ordinance providing for the acceptance of utility and access easements in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records, a deed for the above-mentioned easements.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A, pass reading by title. Second.
On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 49, 2014, and ordinance providing for the acceptance of Aspen Drive, Sycamore Lane, and Azalea Way in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records, a deed for the above-mentioned rights of way.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What's your pleasure?
I move that item 6B, pass reading by title. Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the council number 47, 2014, approving and accepting the updated city of Scranton capital budget for the year 2015, the second year revision and extension of the 2013 five-year plan.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 84, 2014, ratifying and approving the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an easement of correction to include additional signatures on the easement agreement, which was recorded on December 24, 2012, to instrument number as noted between the city of Scranton and Colts regarding the planned access road off Bridge Street into the new intermodal center.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.